Good evening. My name is Sandra Fritz and I'm the chairperson of the Shrewsbury School Committee. Welcome to our meeting of June 3rd. Tonight's virtual meeting is being broadcast live on Selco Channels 29 and 329 and streamed live on Shrewsbury Media Connection website. Thank you again to the work of manager Mark Sarah and our IT Director Brian LaRue. Tonight's meeting will be rebroadcast between now and our next regularly scheduled meeting on June 10th. The public participation portion of our meeting is suspended due to the fact that this is a virtual meeting. However, the public can email the school committee with any questions or comments they might have at schoolcommittee@shrewsbury.k12.ma.us. Before we start our agenda this evening, the Shrewsbury Public Schools community did learn, and we're sorry to learn, that Marge Clark, who served as the principal of the Calvin Coolidge School from 1999 to 2006, recently passed away. Mrs. Clark was a dedicated educational leader who is passionate for improving the lives of the children she served. On behalf of the Shrewsbury Public Schools, we offer our condolences to Mrs. Clark's family, and I'd ask that we have a moment of silence in her honor. Thank you. First on the agenda is Chairperson and Members' Report. Does anybody have anything this evening? Mr. Wensky?
Yes, Sandy, thank you. Just a really quick thank you to everybody involved in today's Class of 2020 Senior Parade up at the high school. I know for my family, it was a really awesome event. As we entered Holden Street, there were 501 yard signs, one for each of the graduates with their senior picture, on the way up to seeing a ton of faculty, staff, and just teachers, and it was just really a great event. So, thank you to everybody involved for planning that. It was very special to our family and yeah, no, appreciate, appreciate the effort to celebrate these great, great graduates.
Great, thanks, John. Anyone else? Not seeing anything. Next is Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Mrs. Fritz. Let me begin by saying that this is the first time, I think, in my 11 years as superintendent that I'm not wearing a shirt and tie at a formal school committee meeting. But I did just come directly from the Last Ride Parade at the high school and did not have time to stop by home to get a, to get a collared shirt. So, the fact that I'm wearing a Shrewsbury Colonial shirt, hopefully people will bear with me for, for that. And I just want to reiterate what a terrific event that was and thank the SHS staff for putting it on, all the Shrewsbury High School faculty and staff who attended, to wave goodbye to the students. It was great to see so many families come through. I think it was a real terrific way to, to celebrate our seniors in an alternative way, given the limitations that we have under the circumstances. So, thank you to everybody involved with that. I also want to thank everyone who was involved with the commemoration ceremony that was videoed and broadcast last night. In particular, the class officers for the class of 2020 did a remarkable job, as well as those from the ETS Television Studio, our students who put together the class video, which was exceptional. I want to thank Ms. Maureen Monopoly, the Assistant Principal, who's the grade level administrator for the senior class, for her remarks, as well as Mr. Bob Sessino, who gave a very terrific speech and remarks that were very meaningful, I think, for our graduates and their families as the guest faculty speaker. We look forward tomorrow night to our graduation part one video ceremony that will also be broadcast at 7:00 PM on Channels 29, 329 on Selco Cable and streamed live on the Shrewsbury Media Connection on the Channel 29 livestream. We look forward to the various remarks that are auditorian, salutatorian. Mr. Wensky, as the Vice Chair of the School Committee and a parent in the class of 2020, I will have some remarks and Mr. Buzidlo will certify the class. And then each student's photo and name will be shown as a way to recognize each of our graduates. Of course, for those who haven't seen the plan, after that, we'll have a break until the end of July, and we're hopeful that on July 25th, we'll be able to have graduation part two, which will be in the stadium here at Shrewsbury High School, if everything public health-wise permits. Next week, graduates and their families will be coming to the high school by appointment to be able to have a ceremony, a small ceremony with our family, we'll actually award them their diploma. There'll be photographs from a professional photographer, and we're looking forward to those individual opportunities for students to receive their Shrewsbury High School diplomas. So, the, the plan has been working well so far, and again, the Last Ride Car Parade today was really exceptional, and we appreciate everybody involved with that. In addition to that, I do want to let the community know that there's actually a virtual art show. I know it's been shared a bit on social media. We'll make sure that a link is on our website. I'll put that out in my next Superintendent's Update as well. But really appreciate the Visual Arts Department putting together this, this opportunity to see our students' art, obviously, the traditional spring art shows for kindergarten through grade eight, and then the one at the high school who had to be canceled due to the school closure. So, this is a unique way to showcase our students' artistic talent and looking forward to people seeing that online. I also want to, it's important, I should, of course, mention that I also send my condolences to the Clark family. Marge Clark was my colleague when I was an elementary principal here in Shrewsbury at Floral Street. She was the principal at Coolidge. She was a really lovely person, very dedicated to the children of the Coolidge community, very smart and really worked hard to try to provide great opportunities to our students. And so, we send condolences to Marge's family, and she certainly will be missed. And then finally, I do want to let the community know that I did send a message out today to the community regarding the, the crisis our nation's experienced right now. This has been a difficult week plus for our nation. I believe that we certainly, we use the word unprecedented a lot of times, but certainly in my lifetime, an unprecedented situation. And I know that on behalf of everyone in the Shrewsbury Public Schools, we certainly feel terribly about the situation that has been happening. You know, the, the killing of George Floyd and the injustice of this kind of treatment of Black Americans is something that obviously concerns us all. I greatly respect those who are exercising their constitutional rights to peaceful assembly, to protest his death and racism in our country. I also greatly respect our law enforcement officers who truly honorably serve and protect and safeguard our communities. But of course, just like everyone, I'm angered by the situations when people or law enforcement officers abuse their power in ways that we've seen in cause harm or even death to our fellow citizens. It's certainly my hope that we'll protect the rights of everyone who acts within the law and support the officers who are respectfully enforcing that law and ensuring that anyone who's violating the law is fairly brought to justice. Certainly, it's caused, this whole situation has caused me to reflect around what we're doing as a school district relative to the issue of racism. Certainly, it is my belief that personally, that I can do more and I can do better as the superintendent of our school district, and I'm confident that we collectively together can do more and can do better to try to address this really incredibly difficult issue. My commitment is that we will work on this as a, as a school community. There are elements that are part of our strategic plan right now to build on cultural literacy. But if we're going to truly live up to our core values of respect and equity, we do have more work to do in the coming days and weeks and months and years ahead. It's something that is certainly not going to be a short-term fix by any means. I look forward to sharing that work with the community as we move through it. At a meeting later on this month, I am hopeful that the report from the Aspen Valley Collaborative, who have conducted an equity audit of our school district earlier this year prior to the closure, will be able to share that report with the school committee. That will be something that will be, I think, helpful to us as we move forward and try to find ways that we're truly ensuring that all members of our community are respected and that we are teaching our students in a way that not only now, but when they become adults, regardless of what they do for work, regardless of where they're living and what community, and certainly when they become parents, that they are teaching and acting in ways that really match what our aspirations are as Americans, which of course is, is justice for all. So, with that, again, it's a, it's a very challenging and difficult situation for our nation, and I certainly know and I'm confident, I did cite one of the Martin Luther King's quotes in my, in my message, his very simple phrase, that the time is always right to do what is right. And I think collectively as a community, we can work towards what is right, and the time certainly is here where that urgency has become greater than ever. So, I encourage people to read my full message, and again, it's, it's important work that we have ahead of us as a school district. And that is Superintendent's Report. Proceed.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. Mr. Powell?
If I may, I just like to, first of all, commend the Superintendent for his words this evening and for his statement released earlier this afternoon. I thought it was very eloquent and well-written. I think it was important for Shrewsbury families to, to see and to hear that. Shrewsbury is an incredibly diverse community, and regardless of your racial or ethnic origin, I think a lot of us have been deeply angered and troubled by the murder of George Floyd last week, and certainly all of the conversations, however uncomfortable they may be, that it has unearthed. I think it's important for Shrewsbury families to hear from the Superintendent and to hear from Shrewsbury Public Schools about our feelings on this, because so many families in Shrewsbury have their kids spend a great deal of time with us, and it's important when families are struggling, when families are frightened, when families are angry, I think, to know where we stand on issues like this. And again, in, in the spirit of the Superintendent's comments, I'd like to suggest that I personally feel it's important that the school committee also express itself on this, and in that spirit, I do intend to propose a resolution. In the spirit of openness, I will draft something for presentation on the agenda at our next meeting, so members have a chance to review and comment and reflect and potentially offer their own input, but the thoughts that I have now, that I think it's important for this committee to go on record condemning the murder of George Floyd, condemning the role that racism continues to play in American life, society, and in education, reaffirming the district's longstanding commitment to diversity, to inclusion, and to serving families of all backgrounds, and committing ourselves to support the Superintendent's efforts and his team's efforts to do all that they can to make sure we're serving Shrewsbury families to the best of our ability. So, that is something I plan to draft and offer to the committee for consideration at our next meeting.
Great, thank you, Jason. I really appreciate you taking the lead on that, and we'll look forward to you providing us with the draft resolution that we can review and hopefully vote on at our next meeting next week. Thank you. Okay, first on the agenda this evening is a recognition award. Shrewsbury Public Schools is this year's Donald J. Johnson Operational and Cost Efficiency Award winner, and Margaret Triskel, who is the Executive Director for Massachusetts Association of School Business Officials, and Doug Peters, Regional Vice President for Voya Financial, are joining our meeting tonight to recognize the district and discuss the award. Dr. Sawyer and Mr. Collins will also be part of the presentation, so welcome.
Thank you so much. Good evening, everybody, and thank you for that kind introduction. As noted, my name is Margaret Triskel, and not only do I have the privilege of being the Executive Director of Masbo, I'm also your colleague, currently serving in my 13th year on the Melrose School Committee. So, I truly appreciate the challenging and important work you all do for, for Shrewsbury. So, tonight, we celebrate conferring Masbo's Donald D. Johnson Operations and Cost Efficiency Award, which recognizes the accomplishment of a district that has implemented a program, activity, or initiative that resulted in increasing efficiency and has saved funding that can be applied more directly to educational priorities. This award is made possible through Masbo's partnership with Voya Financial, represented tonight by Regional Vice President for K-12 Doug Peters, and which includes a $2,500 student scholarship to the Shrewsbury Public Schools. I'd like to share a brief summary of the nominations submitted by Assistant Superintendent Collins, which the award committee found detailed and compelling. Under the leadership of Superintendent Joseph M. Sawyer, the district has become a statewide leader and model for engaging the community to generate revenue and in-kind goods and services for innovative programs, capital projects, and economically distressed families. All of these programs can be adapted and adopted for other school districts. In FY18, the Shrewsbury Public Schools generated over $1.9 million in private gifts and grants, ranking number three across the entire Commonwealth, and far outperforming districts of similar size. For example, Dr. Sawyer orchestrated and has led the Colonial Fund, raising over $267,000 since FY12, supporting innovative educational programs and services. Under Dr. Sawyer's stewardship, the Shrewsbury Public Schools initiated and ran the Turf for Shrewsbury Campaign, raising $1.82 million to replace a severely degraded athletic field with synthetic turf field. His team created the Erase Student School Lunch and Fee Debt Fund, which generated over 100 donations totaling over $6,000 towards erasing the oldest debt of families who were on payment plans. Dr. Sawyer also secured a $400,000 sponsorship grant from the Shrewsbury Credit Union, over five years to support the position of Assistant Superintendent for Community Partnerships and Well-being, as well as the purchase of a 10-passenger van. And he has led the district's implementation of the Donors Choose Program, including leading its policy charge, presenting to the Mass Association of School Superintendents relative to its securing over $18,000 in goods. For these reasons, Shrewsbury Public Schools is the recipient of this year's Donald D. Johnson Operations and Cost Efficiency Award. Superintendent Sawyer, Masbo proudly presents you virtually this commemorative plaque to memorialize this prestigious award. So, someday you'll receive that in person when we can all gather safely together, and we wish you warmest congratulations. And I will turn the floor over, if I may, to Mr. Peters.
Congratulations. And Dr. Sawyer, I too am not wearing a suit where I normally do, be it in person or online, but I wanted to make sure that you saw the orange. I don't have an orange suit, but I wanted to make sure you saw the orange. It's a big part of Voya and, and our message. And, you know, before I, I say anything, as a father of three, personally, I'd like to thank you for your leadership. I had, as we all probably have as parents and teachers, have had to have some difficult conversations, and I had one last night with one of my daughters who's out of college working but living at home with us. And the conversation focused around leadership, and while I've not read what you sent out to the community, just hearing your words and your leadership, it's inspiring. So, thank you for sharing that, and, and I'm inspired by it. Voya is very proud and honored to partner with the Massachusetts ASBO and educators across the country through a variety of programs, and, and we're thrilled to be able to support this initiative that provides scholarships in your, in your school district. We've been part of this program. This program's been around for 10 years, and we've been honored to support it for that long. So, thank you so much for the opportunity. Thank you for all that you're doing, and, and keep up the, the great leadership of our, of our students. So, thank you.
So, I certainly want to thank both of you. This is, for this award, it certainly is something that we're very proud of as a school district, and to get this kind of recognition for the work that, that we've done, it's been important work that's done, benefited the school district in a variety of ways, which is what's most important. I first would like to thank Patrick Collins, our Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations, who is an enormous part of all this work. My name is on the nomination form entirely too much frankly, and, and much of this, of course, is a team effort. I also want to thank Dr. Jane Lazzott, who's our Assistant Superintendent for Community Partnerships and Well-being. That's the position that was created, thanks to the Colonial Connections Program that's so generously funded with a $400,000 donation by Shrewsbury Federal Credit Union. Also want to thank Michelle Biscotti and Kathleen Cohen, who are Directors of Development and Volunteer Services. They were absolutely key in a lot of this work with the Colonial Fund that we started a few years back, as well as with the Turf for Shrewsbury Campaign, along with co-chairs Jim and Paula Bonamo and Deborah Mooney and the entire committee, fundraising committee for that, that initiative, and especially our large, largest donors for that, Central One Federal Credit Union, who donated $750,000 to that project, as well as the Adams Family, who donated half a million dollars so that we could get that, that stadium field built, along with many other donors who contributed. I think we're very fortunate in Shrewsbury, and I've, I've been particularly touched over the course of this year with the initiative that, that I have to say is Mr. Collins's brainchild in turning, in terms of the Erasing Student Lunch and Fee Debt, and to have the number of donations, over, well over 100 donations from folks who are willing to contribute to help the families in our community who are in need, just as we've seen that happening since the pandemic has begun as well. We have a very generous community, and we're very fortunate to benefit from that. I do want to recognize that this is something that has helped us to do some things that we otherwise would not have been able to do without these private donations and philanthropic donations that we've, we've been fortunate to receive. That said, of course, that's not the answer to our very difficult budget situation. We, we know that we've talked this year about having a structural issue, and while certainly I'm proud that we make the very most of the dollars that are available to us and that we've been able to be innovative in seeking funds to do things that we otherwise couldn't do, we certainly, it doesn't mean we're in a great place unfortunately relative to what next year holds, and, and that's something that we'll have to continue to work towards. But again, I really thank both of you. I want to thank the Mass Association of School Business Officials and Voya, and we really do appreciate the recognition this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Fritz. I did, I just also just wanted to make a couple of brief comments, and again, just reiterate the appreciation for the work of our development, part-time development staff, Kathleen Cohen, Michelle Biscotti, and also Jane Lazzott and her role in this as well. But also, I, I think that certainly, you know, the results that have been experienced have been from the, our community, the members that live in Shrewsbury and have stepped up, businesses and individuals who have donated to these various causes. So, I really appreciate their support in all of these programs, and those results would not have been achieved without their support. And it's really, I think, a hallmark around our community, saying that they really do support public education. So, I think that's really an important piece. Also, I think that certainly, this is a bit of good news in, in an environment where there's plenty of bad news that we can talk about and share and, you know, wring our hands about, so we'll take good news when we can, and so this is a good thing to happen tonight. You know, finally, I would just say that, well, it, it might not be widely known that Mass Association of School Business Officials is an organization that provides excellent ongoing professional development to school business administrators and their support staff throughout the school year. I need to have a license to do my work, just like a medical professional, or a lawyer, or a teacher, or whatnot, and Masbo plays a key role in making sure that professional development occurs to maintain school business administration licensure, and also to run programs like this where we're able to share so much information in between school districts to help share best practices and, you know, rise all the boat, so to speak. And again, all that wouldn't happen, of course, without some support from our business community like Voya Financial, who makes these type of award programs happen. So, I just wanted to make mention and thank Voya and Masbo as well.
Thanks, Mr. Collins. I too would like to thank Masbo and Voya, these, every dollar counts today, and public education is expensive. I think we have a wonderful district, and it's because of individuals like Mr. Collins and Dr. Sawyer and everybody mentioned, but I think what Mr. Collins said, it's this community that we live in is very generous, and we are thankful that when Dr. Sawyer or Mr. Collins or whoever the group is, is putting out a need, we do get a wonderful response, but your awarding, giving us this award and Voya, the funding for it, it's, it's certainly something that is going to really help, because as we said, our budget issues are, have been compounded with COVID and every dollar counts. So, thank you, a very sincere thank you from the product school committee. Anybody else have any comments or questions? Not seeing any, so thank you very much. We really appreciate you being able to attend tonight, and have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Be well, stay safe.
You too, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, we will have an update from Dr. Sawyer and other district administrators regarding the school district's response to the COVID-19 school closure.
Thank you, Mrs. Fritz. This is a pretty straightforward conversation this evening. I'm, I'm not going to be, have a slide deck to share, just a couple of bits of information that I think are pertaining to our situation. In terms of, you know, the remote learning program continues to move along, we're into the second-to-last full week of school, and we appreciate, again, all the efforts that our educators are making and our students and their families in order to help make that work. I want to thank Miss Clodder and her curriculum leadership team as well for continuing to move things forward, and you'll hear a report from her in a bit about some ways that we're going to be continuing to evolve our opportunities for remote learning over the summer. What I would speak to you about, what to speak to you about this evening is just to give a bit of a sense of where we're at in terms of planning for next fall. Frankly, we're in a bit of a holding pattern. We had a conference call with Commissioner O'Reilly from Department of Elementary and Secondary Education yesterday, from Superintendents and Assistant Superintendents across the state. Commissioner O'Reilly was clear that there is going to be very specific guidance coming from the state level relative to what the expectations and limitations will be for next fall to reopen school, assuming the phased opening continues to go in the right direction across the Commonwealth. We are certainly working behind the scenes to be planning around different options and different issues that we know we're going to have to address, whether that's a purchase of personal protective equipment that we just made this week, everything from that to planning, you know, how we might address a variety of issues. Certainly, we know that there are different, based on what's happening in other countries, based on what's happening in some other states. We're already releasing plans for next fall. There is the possibility, of course, that depending on where, how the pandemic evolves, that we could be in a full remote learning mode, and that might will continue, and of course, we'll continue to need to adapt that program as we, as we go deeper into things. There's the possibility that we'll be open on a relatively normalized piece with a lot of precautions in place, but there's likely certainly an in-between type mode that would potentially have alternating schedules to reduce the total number of students who are in a school at any one time, whether that's on a week-by-week basis. The state has indicated to us that they're going to be, again, fairly directive in what the expectations would be and are expecting and wanting districts across the Commonwealth to be doing very similar things that most of what the state prescribes is what will be expected. So, we don't want to get too far out in front of that. We've been told we'll be getting that guidance in the next week to two weeks. In the meantime, again, we're looking at a whole variety of options. Our leadership team is working very hard behind the scenes to identify what the challenges are, what some of the solutions could be in terms of what this kind of quote-unquote new normal could look like in the fall when we return to school. In the meantime, as Ms. Belcito indicated last week, you know, we are moving forward with our special education and other support programs in the summer for English language learners and Title I reading in a remote manner, with leaving the door a crack open for some potential limited in-person opportunities, perhaps later in the summer. But right now, our major focus is planning for remote opportunities for the summer, and Ms. Belcito will be communicating out with the parent community of our students who qualify for those services in the near future. So, there's lots of things happening behind the scenes, and at this point, what I'd like to do is turn it over to Mr. Collins, who will talk a little bit about how we're also in a holding parent pattern right now relative to transportation because of the uncertainty that we face. But I'll ask Mr. Comment, Mr. Collins to comment.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. So, on a typical school year, we would be reopening school bus registration on or about April 1st for the subsequent school year, and allowing, you know, plenty of lead time for folks to weigh that decision whether or not to register for bus service, whether they're going to need it or not, and also make payment upfront for that, a one-time payment for the year. Of course, given the situation, we did not reopen bus registration as of yet. Of course, given the situation, we did not reopen bus registration as of yet. For the upcoming school year. And we don't think it's wise to do that until we get more definitive information about. What the school reopening is going to look like. As you know, you voted a couple of meetings ago to provide some refunds for folks who had paid for the service. And we're still working to process some partial refunds to, you know, over twenty-two, twenty-three hundred families. Which is a large administrative task. Taking on in addition to what's happening in terms of normal day-to-day operations during a pandemic. So we're cautious about. Not trying to take on administrative additional administrative burden. During this crisis. And it's also purely just from a consumer standpoint. If you're not knowing, you know, what school looks like for the upcoming school year. It's hard for you to make a decision, you know, should I make a purchasing decision? To procure a bus pass, if you will, at some certain price for the entire year. Not knowing what the school schedule looks like. So we think it's in our best interest and parents' best interest at this particular point. To kind of wait and see what unfolds in the coming weeks. It certainly shortens the timeframe for parents to make a decision potentially. And also for our bus contractor to adjust routes and whatnot. So. We know that those are the conditions that we're walking in, but we still think it's a better. Situation to wait to get further guidance because what we do know, as Dr. Sawyer said, is that the reopening. Is known to be very prescriptive. And regulated by the state Mass Department of Education. So. We think that busing will also look like that. And so we don't want to make some sort of. Local decision that might be in conflict with that prematurely.
So that is what we have for you this evening. As far as an update, we'd be happy to take any questions or comments the committee has.
Great. Thank you. Any questions or comments? I am seeing none. Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, Ms. Clutter will provide the committee with a report regarding use of adaptive software technology platforms. For remote learning and summer skill retention.
Okay, as Ms. Clutter unmutes, I'm going to share my screen because I have some slides that from Ms. Clutter. Bear with me for one moment. Okay, give me a thumbs up if you can see that.
Yep. Thank you, Dr. Sawyer.
Okay.
So thank you for the opportunity to speak with you about teaching and learning again. Last week I shared with you as part of my update that a small team made up of district leaders across levels. Was evaluating software resources in anticipation of the summer. And this evening I'm focusing on just that topic and getting into detail about some of the. Remote learning resources that we've identified for students and families for use so that we can mitigate the effects of regression. Before I talk about remote learning tools, though, I want to capture what's powerful about teaching and learning in Shrewsbury, and that's our skillful teachers. This slide is a shout out to Amy Smith, who's a physical education teacher at Floral Street School. And like her other colleagues in the PE, Health and Family Consumer Science Department. Amy's been designing remote activities for use at home. And pictured here is a Floral Street teacher, Annie Merrill, with her with her own children strengthening her. Ab muscles with everyday objects. You look closely, you can see that precious commodity that we have all spent saving at home. And as we move into new phases, I think this is a nice reminder that, you know, keeping everyone healthy and well reminds a top priority. And just as exercise is important to the body, reading is that exercise of the mind that's so critical. So why is this summer so important in terms of thinking about? Resources to combat regression? Well, if you think about it. School closure, we've persevered for this for approximately sixty days, which is a third of the school year. And just sit with that for a minute and think about, you know, two thirds of a sandwich leaves you hungry. Our kids are hungry for more learning and we need to find some tools that can fill that need. And it's not just a third, it's the last third, which is typically when we see higher rates of growth and and kids better able to kind of. Apply the skills they've learned both academically, socially, emotionally, and also kind of harness their. Their work habits to kind of put those two things together. We're really missing not only working with our kids to solidify those skills in the last weeks of school. But also we're missing current information about where they are. Statistics on regression during typical times suggest that kids that don't engage in practice. Are at risk for a loss of two months of reading and even more in math. And my goal in addressing the community tonight is to ensure that everyone, everyone engages in summer learning. It's never been more important. The. Statistics about the summer slide are sobering. But there's good news and that's why I want to focus on that. There are two points and one is that the summer slide is preventable. With just at least ten minutes of practice in each subject and each day. You can make sure that the skills your child has built will be retained. Now that's saying that the risk of regression is exact is exacerbated, sorry, for students that were below below benchmark when we stopped. And the information about the kids who were below benchmark for us now is old information. And so we need to get the message out to everyone that all students have a responsibility to practice because everyone can improve. Everyone can make an effort and effort is everything. Smart is not something that you are. Smart is something that you get and you get smart with effort. The second piece of good news is that because regression is a shared concern, lots of people have been working on some solutions. And for us, that means we can pull together resources from many places. Our families are going to receive a curated list of supports that have been carefully looked at by our educators. And we're going to look at them in conjunction with the information that we got from families as a result of our survey. So some of the lessons learned from the spring tell us that families need tools that kids will want to use for practice. Kids need flexibility and tools that can be accessed from anywhere. Preferably with a variety of devices. And both students and families need support. So we've increased the resources to families that we would typically offer. And we've increased our efforts to communicate about them, starting with tonight. So the greatest investment you can make in continuous learning. And research tells us that the greatest return on that investment comes with a focus on reading and math. So please, parents, set some goals with your children for progress in both subjects. You can see here that the way we focus at the elementary level is encouraging reading through use of a bingo board. And we're going to modify the bingo board, but continue with that because that organizer is helpful. At the older levels, we focused on thematics, encouraging kids to read books across a variety of genres. On theme and that theme becomes the focus of discussion in the fall. Again, we're modifying that approach a little bit, but I think those themes work really well for students at those grade levels. And so we'll continue to promote that. But one of the things that is a factor in student success over the summer is something we don't talk about as much. Because we have a chance to enlist kids individually when we're in school together. And that's executive functioning. So if you think about your brain as the executive of your body. Helping you make choices about what to do when and how to prioritize tasks. You can quickly see that there's a continuum of executive functioning skills that kids come to school with. Some kids have learned better than others how to delay gratification. Some kids have learned better than others how to manage their attention. And some kids have learned how to sustain their focus. And so some kids might be fine with a library card and a reading list. But most kids, particularly over the summer, when there's a lot of really great distractions. Benefit from a structure that a program like that can provide. So the reason we're talking a little bit about additional resources is because. We really need additional resources to target all kids. But also the programs that we're going to focus on are not just generic skills practice. They're aligned with the standards that we've been teaching to and they're adaptable. So they meet kids where they really are. So our data from students and families shows that remote learning so far is working. And at the same time, it hasn't resolved all the ongoing learning challenges presented by the pandemic. So we understand that there are going to be some gaps that students come back to school with. Gaps in experiences and gaps in understanding. And we're not alone in wondering how kids are going to fare in the coming year. So we're positioning ourselves to address the challenge. By thinking about how to make the most of the summer as an opportunity. To extend learning beyond the traditional reading and math programs that we typically endorse. So in our work, we evaluated eight different platforms. And we were looking for dynamic learning tools that could be flexibly used at home. And then again, when we returned to school at school. That were engaging to kids and easy. That were aligned with standards as well as district goals. And that adapted the content so that as kids progressed, the tools that they were using also progressed to match their levels. So I'm going to show you a little video. It's only three minutes. But it gives you a sense of the Freckle program. The video was created by a teacher and it's a helpful walkthrough of the features of the program. But I want to be sure to note that teachers are not going to be using these programs into the fall. These are resources that we secured over the summer for use by families. One concern we heard from families was that printing materials was a burden on the home front. And you can see in Freckle that there are some reading passages and activities that resemble a worksheet that don't require any paper or printing. So let's watch this video and then I'll talk a little bit more about Freckle after.
Hi, everybody. Today we're going to talk about Freckle, which is an online learning platform for K through twelve students. I've used Freckle a lot as a teacher and I've found that it's a solid tool for using technology in the classroom and kids love using it. So just a few basic facts about Freckle. First of all, it's an online adaptive learning platform for math, ELA, science and social studies. It's primarily for K through five, but they've been rolling out a lot of content for older students. A lot of features are free with the teacher edition and optionally reports and extra content are part of paid accounts. So let's take a quick look at what students can do when they're using Freckle. In ELA, Freckle has some really strong content that's highly adaptive. In other words, the program will assess the skills of each student and adjust the level of the content accordingly. And the ELA content basically breaks down into two main areas, reading comprehension and word work. And then depending on the grade level, these two areas break down further. So for example, in grades K through two, students can work on phonics, decoding and sight words. And when students work on reading comprehension, they read a short passage and then they answer questions related to the passage. One of the great things about Freckle is that it's adaptive. So in reading, students initially take. A diagnostic assessment and then the program can offer different versions of the same reading passage depending on the student's reading level. The word study area of Freckle is also adaptive and word study consists of activities. In which students sort and classify words according to their spelling patterns. In math, Freckle is also very adaptive and relies on diagnostic tests to figure out which content to give to individual students. The heart of Freckle math is math practice that's aligned to Common Core math standards. And this goes all the way from kindergarten to twelfth grade. So it's really comprehensive. Students are given math problems and if they don't get the right answer, Freckle often provides a brief explanation or a video tutorial. And the younger students can also practice basic math skills such as math facts. In social studies and science, Freckle has been expanding their offerings a lot in the last couple of years and there are a lot of very engaging. Lesson plans and activities for various grade levels. Okay, so how do you know that students are doing their work on Freckle? Well, with the free teacher edition, you don't have access to data and reports, but the paid school edition offers a lot of feedback about student performance. You can really drill down and see how students are doing and use the information to help you decide when and how to provide. Extra support and intervention. Finally, how do kids like using Freckle? Well, in my experience, students really enjoy the learning content. Plus, students earn virtual coins as they work through assignments and problems. And with the coins, students can go to the piggy store where they can change their character and buy clothes and accessories for their character. And they really like this a lot. So in short, I've really found that Freckle is a deep and well-designed platform. If you choose to really use all the features, it can take a while to learn everything. But you can also just get your students started with a free account and a minimal amount of effort. And Freckle's support team is really responsive too. So if you're interested in trying Freckle, you can go to freckle.com and it's easy to get started. Let me know if you have any questions and thanks for watching.
So. The reason I'm advocating for the the paid version of the subscription is for exactly the assessment question that he brought up, which is. We can see who's engaging, particularly we can see who's engaging from the at-risk. Students that we've identified either because they were below reading benchmarks when school closed. Or because they have yet to engage in remote learning to the level that we'd like. And we can offer supports that are targeted engaging for kids. I'm not sure how many middle schoolers are going to be engaged by the piggy store. But I know that the variety of content that they can access will be compelling. And I'm confident that. Using that tool to give kids a lot of different reading. Samples at their fingertips and not just in one content area is going to be engaging for them. Buying Freckle, that's the paid version, will cost sixty-two thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars. And that grants us access for students in grades K through eight. It also makes, it's linked to an assessment that we can use back in the fall called the Star Assessment System, which is in both. English Language Arts and Math. So that as we try to move closer to a model where we screen all kids across subjects and think about what they need. We can better deploy that when we get back to school in our new normal. Again, this is a tool over the summer that we're really pushing out for family use. But I'm also thinking about how to position ourselves for the possibility of continued remote learning and wanting to make that more robust. When we think about the three aspects of my work, our curriculum, we know we had good curriculum offerings available. Instruction, our teachers worked really hard to push out both asynchronous lessons. And Zoom lessons across content areas, including the allied arts. But the assessment piece was missing. And so thinking about how we might. Hold kids accountable in ways that really meet them where they are and focus on growth is really important. And especially for thinking about. The possibility of. We're in school for a new normal and then we must close again for a certain amount of time. Having something that we can have as a go-to tool is really important. The next slide is going to show you ST Math. And one thing that's really interesting that you'll notice from this short video, again, I apologize, but I think having you get a sense of these programs is really important. And I'm mindful of the audience watching at home too. One feature that's really important about ST Math is that they remove the barrier that language presents. What this means for adults who are trying to play is that it's a little confusing initially. And that's really by design. ST Math is created by a neuroscience company. And what they want kids to do is get really good at progressive struggle. And so they're they're thinking a little bit about how to encourage kids to persevere so that they grow that muscle. I'm going to have you see this video and then I'll show you a little bit of the video on the right.
Welcome to ST Math. ST Math is a game-based learning system that features Gigi the Penguin. Students use mathematical thinking to figure out how to get Gigi past obstacles and across the screen. One of the key design features is that math problems are first introduced with the language, numbers and symbols removed to be reintroduced later. Enabling access for all students to the critical thinking and problem solving at the heart of mathematics. In the software, this multiplication problem, ostriches have two legs. How many legs does a group of three ostriches have altogether? Becomes a puzzle where all of the key elements are presented entirely visually. Students see and solve a highly interactive game where they choose the number of boots needed by all three ostriches. And Gigi is able to cross the screen. Sequences of these games are organized into learning paths where as students make progress, the symbols are gradually reintroduced. Until by the end of the learning path, students are solving exactly the same math problems they will encounter in any textbook or on any standardized test. There's practically no multiple choice in ST Math. Students actively learn by doing. And every puzzle provides rich, immediate and informative feedback. Students are able to try things out and learn from their own mistakes. For example, in this volume conversion problem, we need to convert two and a half gallons into quarts. The student answers incorrectly, choosing twelve quarts. Notice how the software animates the consequences of the student's answer, providing a clear visual of the correct conversion rates of four quarts to a gallon. And showing the student precisely why their answer was incorrect. The two extra quarts means Gigi is unable to cross the screen. Students then try the same problem again, immediately able to apply their new understanding. The concept of what two and a half gallons means visually is clearly animated by the puzzle. This is not just practice software. This is instructional software where students actually learn new ideas. ST Math has over eight hundred games and during the course of a single grade level. ST Math has over 800 games and during the course of a single grade level, students will play around 120 games, solving well over 4,000 puzzles. So whether students are working with visual models of fractions on the number line, solving interactive linear equations, or even graphing parabolas in Algebra I, they're continually engaged in critical thinking, rigorous problem solving and developing their own intuitive conceptual grasp of math. Teachers also bring ST Math into the classroom as a tool to facilitate student discussions. So by transforming the learning process, ST Math has been able to transform the learning outcomes. Entire districts in California have closed the achievement gap for their English learners. And tens of thousands of students are doubling or even tripling their rate of improvement in math proficiency on state assessments. Currently, ST Math is available for kindergarten through eighth grade with intervention at the high school level. And while half a million students are using ST Math, our mission is to ensure that all students are mathematically equipped to solve the world's most challenging problems. And from our research, this can only be achieved when students are learning math by seeing, experiencing and doing math.
So one of the things that's compelling about ST Math is that it mirrors the concrete to abstract progression that we emphasize in our own math curriculum. And it also gives kids an opportunity to experience firsthand that repeated practice and doing something over and over is what's important in terms of yielding a result. In the second video, I want to show you just a brief clip. The, I think it captures well the kid's experience of playing the video because the best tool is not going to be useful at all if kids don't engage with it. And I think this video, although the voice you hear is a student, it is not the Penguin. I just want to make sure that the Penguin does not talk. You can get a sense of the student's sense of ownership. And I think that that's what's really powerful about, about the curriculum. So I'm going to ask Dr. Sawyer to play it and then fast forward it so that you can see the progression and, and hear the student as he's playing.
What mark do you want to have, Mrs. Clutter?
I think if you start at the beginning and then go to 11:25. So just play the first minute or so.
Hello, guys. Welcome back to ST Math. I'm Stephen and today we will be playing with Gigi the Penguin. Let's do number pairs and making ten. Gigi, hi, Gigi. Puzzle one. Tug boat. Level one. There. Equal. Nice tug boat. Maybe we can get him. Let's see Gigi can go in the boat. He's not, he's not going to go in the boat. He's just going to go past the bridge. Ah, wait. One side. There we go. There we go. Ooh, now it's getting harder and harder and harder, but it's so easy for me. So easy just for you. Wait, that rhymes. E and P. Wait, I don't, I don't remember what I just said, but anyways, Gigi's gonna say cannibal. Cannibal, cannibal, symbol. Wow, it's some cannibals. He's so excited. He's so excited. Whoa, partnership.
Point that we're getting at the notion of balancing both sides of an equation and how different values have to match. If you fast forward it to 11:25, you can kind of see how this concept progresses.
Okay, this is there.
So you see the tug boat's now in formation that we kind of recognize as dice. You can see that transition to abstract number.
Oh, again. Yeah, it was actually easy again. That was easy peasy. We and cheese.
Okay, thanks, Dr. Sawyer.
Yeah, I'm seeing what I'm doing this.
So one of the things that I noticed is really interesting with this student and with the small sample size of kids I engaged to try some of these platforms was watching the self-talk that happened and the language that kids brought to it when there was no language on the screen. And so from an adult perspective, it can be kind of annoying to hear that little voice. I think the fact that, you know, that child is greeting Gigi and recognizing, oh, I've got to get her there. I wonder what's going to happen. Is the, is the figure going to go in the boat? Using the words like equal and, oh, I've got it. This is getting a little harder, but I think I can figure it out. And noticing how the program shows both the abstract representation of five and then breaks it into those small tug boats to see the, the visual of five that parallels kind of our approach in using manipulatives in school, but in ways that don't require parents to have manipulatives at home. So it really reduces the barrier that language can present for math practice. The best thing of all is that thanks to a grant that's made possible through the Mass Math Initiative and the 1-8 Foundation, ST Math will be free for all students in K to six. So that leaves us addressing the need for math for grades seven and eight. And so Freckle will fill that need in terms of those grades. And then Alex, which is also an adaptive tool that's long been in use in the district, is something that we're looking to expand early to our rising ninth graders and our rising eighth graders. So that we can just start them a little sooner using some of the platforms that we know have been really effective. So in these last weeks of school, as we're getting ready to leave remote learning behind, I want parents to start thinking about how they can prepare for summer learning. And there are really three things that are helpful to organize right now. One is the calendar. I'd never underestimate the importance of having a visible reminder of a task. And a calendar becomes kind of a check-in system that's ready to go for parents so that you can reinforce routine. Because routine is what works for kids. We are sending home calendars, but having your calendar up is also a really good reminder. The second thing is a library card. If, if children don't have a library card yet, getting one will expand their access to resources even beyond the ones that we share on our list. The Shrewsbury Public Library has been a tremendous partner for us and they're thinking about how to take summer reading remote. Hoping to engage at the very end of the summer with some of the live events that make the library so special. But in the absence of that, they're really thinking about how to engage kids in a remote way. And a library card gives kids access to even more online reading material than we can provide because they've invested a lot in e-resources that can be lent out remotely, given the pandemic situation. And the third thing to kind of prepare is a computer learning station. So the kids can access the district resources that will be provided like Freckle and ST Math, but also some resources that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education are pushing out. And Camp Kinda, which is in the middle, is one of those. Camp Kinda is, is billed as, it's kind of like camp. They push out to your email if you register a daily learning challenge that's really cross-content. So there's one happening right now about the pyramids that looks at both reading material and also some math experiences. And if you're someone that really appreciates having a reminder show up in your email box, Camp Kinda is a good solution because they will send you a reminder regularly if you subscribe to that resource. And again, we're going to be pushing out all of these resources to everyone. So if you miss them tonight, you won't miss them in the coming weeks. So Dr. Lizat shares a favorite quote by William James, which is that you should act like what you do makes a difference because it does. And again, I see summer as a chance for us to grow academic skills, but also really to capitalize on some of the other skills we know that are so important in terms of success. So the importance of making a plan, the importance of committing to that plan and being held accountable to that, reflecting and setting goals and then trying again to see how well you were met, meeting your goals are really important. And so rather than thinking of it as an expectation that parents are going to be, you know, kind of enforcing something unpleasant, I think it's really an opportunity for parents to kind of lean in and engage kids. What are the skills that you think you're really good at? What's gone well with remote learning so far? And what are some things that you think you could really practice? Now let's find some ways that you want to really practice that skill. And I think one of the hallmarks of what we're putting together is that there's lots of entry points for kids to practice. So if they're engaged by projects, Camp Kinda is going to be a really great resource for them. If they're engaged by structure and a bingo board, we're going to have that. And we're also going to have some interactive tools that are novel because kids have been doing remote learning for a while and we know that novelty works. They've not experienced Freckle or ST Math yet. And so we're hoping that that novelty will translate to a willingness to practice. And again, 10 minutes a day, reading and math, powerful investments to make. So I remember that, you know, when I was principal, Coolidge parents would say, well, you know, I just want summer to be fun. And I think absolutely, learning is fun. We want summer to be fun too. So we're trying to make it simple for parents to access the resources that we're sharing. Thanks to Dr. Lizat and our generous donors in the community, Staples is one of them. We're going to have postcards made so that there's one place that families have to go to access all of the resources for summer learning. So this QR code will bring you to one sheet where we're putting all of the links to these tools and trying to emphasize as parents pick up materials in each school, how we can transition from remote learning to summer learning. Again, you might see that when you receive your kids' belongings, you might see it online. It's likely you'll see it all over the place because we know that the key to getting smarter is effort. And we want to encourage everyone to do all they can to minimize the impact of school closure on our kids. So if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Great. Thank you, Amy. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Jason?
Just a comment. I really want to compliment this approach. You know, really one of the number one concerns that I'm hearing from parents right now is anxiety over where their kids are going to be when they come back in the fall because of how remote learning has shaken out. And I know that there is that traditional summer slide. It's clear to me that a lot of creativity has gone into this approach to making sure that we're not just putting out tools that we know that deliver curriculum well. We're obviously, we have, there's a lot of focus here on putting out tools that kids are going to want to engage with. And I love the idea of the postcard with the QR code so that families can have one point of access. I know that one of the pieces of feedback that you, Ms. Clutter, have talked about that we've received quite a bit is, you know, with different teachers and different emails and webpages and resources and oh my, there can be a lot of different places and it can be a bit overwhelming. So I really, really love that idea of just having one, one physical thing that families can put on the refrigerator or otherwise go back to, to, to know that that's where they can get, get the best resources. So kudos to you and your team.
Thank you. Thanks, Jason. Lindsay?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, great. I really commend you for all of this work. It's exciting. It's, it's innovative. I, my family very briefly explored Freckle during those first couple of weeks when things were a little crazy at home. And I was surprised how motivating getting that little pig sunglasses seemed to be, even for some of my kids who wouldn't like me to admit that amongst their peer group. So I, 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 I hope that families can find some opportunity to really, really grab on to some of these. I want to pivot if I could just for a second though, back to sort of where Dr. Sawyer opened our conversation about what's sort of going on in the world today. And I have seen an explosion on social media of parents asking about how do we talk to our kids about what's going on? What is our role? The discussions at the dinner table are critical and important, but also presenting opportunities for kids to pick up a book that challenges on some, on some of these topics or exposes them to some new ideas. And if it's possible, you know, at the, at, at different grade levels, obviously whether it's stories about movie bridges and the elementary school level, the fictional accounts like Ghost Boys or graphic novels. March, you know, there's a lot out there. And if, if there's an opportunity for you to think through, and obviously they have great partnerships with the public library and I'm really, really appreciative of that. I think even the movie list, right? Watching Hidden Figures as a family on a, on a movie night and talking about women, the women mathematicians at NASA that, like you said, are learning that don't feel like learning, but definitely are, but are also looping back that important piece of, of work. And so that we, we can help families even think about how to engage in dialogue. If, if there's an opportunity, I would, I would love to see us build, build that out.
I think your point is really well taken. I think that's one of the benefits of partnering with the library because they're always massaging their collection for things that are current and that's certainly very top of mind for everyone. But I was just talking to Lisa Daly, who is the English Language Arts Curriculum Coordinator. And, you know, Dr. Lizat, who had both, you know, found the same resource through Common Sense Media about how to talk about racism and, and particularly how to help families do that work. So that's something that with the summer reading themes is definitely embedded. In terms of looking at our list, we are constantly looking through that list to make sure, you know, there's, at least the statistic was 10 years ago, like more than 8,000 children's books published every year. And so there's no reason for our lists to be static. At the same time, families kind of like passing down the books that their kids have read and knowing, oh, when you get to fourth grade, you read this favorite. And so we're always trying to balance one, kind of what we keep as classics or recommended books and what we add, as well as thinking beyond kind of text as books. Because as you said, there's a lot of really powerful work in documentaries and other things. And capturing a student's interest is so important in terms of getting them about, you know, interested in the next topic. So one of the things we're trying to capture is asking different district leaders to recall a book that they read when they were in school that had a powerful impact on them and doing a little clip around that. I think it's going to be important to do kind of virtual book chats to encourage reading. And so although we're organizing right now and pushing things out, it won't be our only opportunity to really focus on that. And as you know, talking about race and class and sexism is a sensitive thing. It's important to do that well. And so it buys us a little time to think about what are the most appropriate texts for each grade level to do that? Because we know that even young children can talk about and identify racism. And yet for parents, they're, they're not really thinking about that with, you know, that we think of that as a topic for older students. And so I want to make sure that we're approaching it in a really planful way. But for people who are wondering and wanting to talk about that right now, Common Sense Media has some terrific resources and those will be pushed out with what we have.
Thank you so very much for all your work. It's wonderful.
Thank you. Anyone else have any comments or questions? Dale?
Question. Great presentation. I'm really excited about the software and what it offers. But my question is, what, from a cost point of view, what do you see for the next year? And what do you see going forward after the next year with this, assuming it works out well?
So I'm one of those people that wants to see how it works before I go in more than one year. This will enable us to use it all through the summer and into next year. I could just say that, that the, the price that we're paying is not the initial price that was fielded to us because I want to make sure that we're making the most of every dollar and especially now. If, if we didn't face the kind of ambiguity about the return to school, I'd have more questions myself about the investment, given the dire situation that we're in budget-wise. But I think that, you know, having reflected on what's missing in, in our remote learning plan, it, it's not the quality of the teaching and it's not the way we focused on standards. It's really the ability to monitor kids individually and give them feedback. So if we're in a situation where, you know, school is disrupted and we're managing kids, some kids in school and some kids out, a, a program that allows us to monitor kind of kids and encourage practices that also feels family-friendly is really key because I'm, I'm mindful of, you know, the phased plan that the governor has outlined might go really well. But we also might have families that are grounded or, you know, returning to work and, and they're also flexing on their schedules. So having something that works for kids and for families is really important.
So I'm all in for this and I think it's an investment we need to make. But, but we're talking about Freckle and we're talking about ST Math and the two together are costing us how much over the next year?
ST Math isn't costing us anything.
Okay. And going forward, if we keep up with it, will there be charges after the first year?
So at the end of June 2021, I can apply for a second grant to continue it. And then after that, I think we incur a very small fee. It's very reasonable because it's supported by a generous donor through the 1-8 Foundation.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just if I could also add around that, I mean, the total cost that we're looking at for having this, the Freckle program, as well as expanding the Alex program down to the upper middle school grades is a little over $72,000. The ST Math piece would range between $6,000 and $10,000 if we're purchasing it outright. But again, that's covered by the grant that Ms. Clutter successfully procured, which we appreciate. In terms of the In terms of the, uh, funding for next year, uh, one thing that we're exploring, uh, and Mr. Collins has been working closely with the, uh, municipal leadership on this, uh, the, the, I believe this was discussed at the Board of, last Board of Selectment meeting, but uh, the CARES Act has provided, uh, upwards of three point three million dollars to the town of Shrewsbury. That's based on a, a population per pupil or not per pupil, per member of the community, uh, sum to reimburse, uh, the, the community for expenses related to, uh, dealing with COVID nineteen. The school department, uh, likely will have access to some level of those funds. Um, and I know that Mr. Collins is exploring, uh, with, uh, Mr. Mizikar and, and the person he's put in charge of, um, that reimbursement program as to what might be eligible. Um, and this kind of cost may very well be eligible for that seventy-two thousand dollars may also be able to be expensed um, to the, uh, the federal government's, uh, stimulus funding, uh, for, to the first round of the CARES Act, uh, which will certainly be helpful for next year. Uh, of course, we want to be mindful of, uh, if we want to keep, keep going with it, if it turns out to be a program they want to keep, um, even once the, uh, pandemic is over at some point. Um, that's, that's something we'll have to factor into our, uh, yearly software costs and we'll have to see if the cost benefit is there. Uh, but I concur that next year, we think this is a very wise investment and hopefully it will have, uh, really, uh, very little, if any, impact on our appropriated budget.
John, I think you had a comment?
Yeah, just really quick, a great presentation. I feel like this gamification of summer learning, I think it keeps kids engaged, uh, certainly uh, throughout, uh, just a question with regards to Freckle and, um, the other apps involved. I'm familiar with Alex, but with Freckle, is that, is that an app-based program or is that just available through like, uh, web, uh, like web address?
It's web-based right now. Um, it does have, um, some plan, I think, going forward to make it an app. Um, it works very well on the iPad. We wouldn't invest in anything that doesn't.
Yeah, exactly. No, it's good. I'm just thinking about, uh, you know, accessibility through different devices, but no.
Yeah, um, I have to give a shout out to Brian LaRue again. I, I don't think I can do that enough. It's really amazing when he delivers for us and he is working on trying to configure things through yet another portal that means that parents just have one sign-on to see an icon for each of these things so that it, it becomes really simple on the user end. Um, again, we heard, um, feedback makes us better. We heard a lot of feedback about how important it is to make it simple on the user end. And, um, and Brian is really good at thinking about how to do that.
Yeah, I also like the, the way you're implementing this through the QR codes. I mean, most every smartphone has a QR reader and, uh, they can pull up those links. So, uh, very easy. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, really good work, Amy. I, I think, you know, Jason mentioned again, you know, regression, that's, that's something that parents, I'm sure are concerned about, teachers are concerned about. And, you know, we're all learning to do things differently now that we're online for work, for school. So this is something that I think has a longer life now. It might be something that hopefully we don't have to, to be in a kind of lockdown again, but it might be something that we can use as a district long-term to supplement learning for students and, you know, help families have tools that are readily available and easily accessible. Um, so I think it's, it's got a long life to it and it's going to be needed, especially over the summer. I do have one question. You know, I think we may hear from some families, burnout, you know, they've been home, they've been doing this already. How, how do you respond to that type of, uh, sentiment?
Well, I think, you know, as I said, there's, there's, the, the, the goal is practice. There's lots of entry points. And it might be that kids cycle in and out of using things that are online tools. And that's okay. Uh, we really want the practice. It's not so much that the practice has to be online. The benefit of the online is that we can kind of see what kids are doing. So we have a window into that. So we're encouraging that because it's helpful to us. But for people that need a break, I would say they need to take one. There, there are, um, purposefully embedded in kind of our plan, some things that enable practice that don't require a computer because I do know that some, you know, some families will experience fatigue, even if it's a novel tool on the computer. And some kids, you know, I have two nieces. One would just be, you know, let me go to my room and continue reading. I, I don't need any tools. I just want time to read. And, um, and one would be much more engaged by having an online tool and kind of a regular routine. So, uh, you know, I, I can see that playing out across the district and all of our students. Kids that could do a lot of deep learning with a project, um, and get every bit of benefit from that. I know that there are kids that are engaged, you know, because they're connected to school when, when closure hit and, and they're connected to their teachers and they're, they're going to continue learning no matter what. I'm looking for tools that are going to engage the kids that may be more reluctant to practice over the summer um, so that we can level the playing field for kids that are most at risk for regression. And if they appeal to everybody, so much the better. So I really want to acknowledge also the work of the principals and the curriculum coordinators across levels and specifically kind of Maureen Henry and, um, Meg Bartlett and Meg Belcito for thinking collaboratively with me about, you know, those barriers um, and how we reduce them. Kathy Lang Madden in terms of thinking about the needs of English learners. Because I think our focus is really presenting a balanced approach and not endorsing necessarily online practices being the only form of practice that's effective. The goal is practicing and reading and math and engaging kids in, in what engages them.
Great, thank you. Before we vote on the grant, Dr. Sawyer, any comments?
I just want to thank Ms. Clutter and her team for so carefully vetting the various, uh, tools that we could have, uh, decided to go with. I think that, uh, there's a nice combination of opportunities and tools here for students and their families. Uh, I appreciate the questions and the comments in the school committee and, uh, I certainly endorse, uh, this approach and look forward to, I think they're thinking very carefully also about how to communicate it to try to maximize students' participation as we partner with families this summer. Um, and with that, I certainly would recommend that you accept the grant so we can get the ST Math program on board.
Great, thank you. Is there anything further? Okay, may have a motion that the committee here, the report and vote to accept a grant from the One Eight Foundation for providing access to the ST Math learning software program, which is estimated to be worth between six thousand and ten thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote is required. Dale?
Aye.
Lindsay?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. And thanks to Dr. Lizat for securing the resources for those postcards and Blake Stewart for her design of those terrific postcards.
Thank you. Okay, next we have our minutes from the school committee meeting held on May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty. Are there any changes or corrections?
Nope.
There being none, unless it be marked as accepted as distributed. Uh, tonight we do need to go into executive session for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one A seven, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant in aid requirements, purpose seven. Open meeting law, Mass, open meeting law, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-two F G, for the purpose of reviewing, approving, and/or releasing executive session minutes. B for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or a litigating position of the public body. And the chair so declares, purpose three. The Shrewsbury Education Association Unit A, Shrewsbury Education Association Unit B, the Shrewsbury Paraprofessional Association and/or the Shrewsbury Cafeteria Workers. And C for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, purpose two. Non-represented support staff members, including secretaries, clerical workers, information technology support staff, extended school care staff and other support staff and/or non-represented administrators as a group, including assistant superintendents, executive director of human resources, principals, director of information technology, assistant director of special education in pupil personnel services and the director of extended learning. Where deliberation and open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, we will return to open session only for the purposes of adjournment for the evening. May have a motion that we adjourn to the executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote is required. Dale?
Aye.
Lindsay?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Myself, thank, uh, aye. Thank you and good night.